Buenas en Manana Dus. We are, I mean, 36 now, the House of Representatives in Guam is back in session. We are on the second reading and we are continuing with substitute bill number 151-36COR. Senator San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've been advised that the requests I made, that the corrections have been made, and I'm satisfied. And I'm in full support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On bill number 151-36COR, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I did want to inquire a few questions with regards to this bill. Certainly, I think it's a very good program with regards to addressing abandoned buildings around the island. And we certainly see DPW has been very active lately in going out in the community and addressing the removal of these derelict buildings. I hope in some cases, if they're being restored, that's a very good thing. I see the timelines that have been included and the dates have been moved from 10 to 60 days. But I did want to ask, because, you know, if anybody owns land on Guam, you know, the challenges that come with it. And in some cases, you know, we hear you have family that are owners of the property that may have moved off island and are not here, and they need to be contacted. I read in the paper the response by the DPW director and how, you know, they're going about efforts to contact these landowners. But what in the case right now, how, I wanted to ask the sponsor of the bill, how are those issues being addressed? In some cases, it might be a family home, for example, that, you know, the children may have left the island and the parents may have passed away. How do you address that? How do you address if you have undivided interests in a property to determine who is the responsible party that can respond on behalf of that undivided interest? And then also, we also recognize, Madam Speaker, right now, if you're trying to get a contractor to do work, let's say, you know, DPW cites a landowner and they desire to restore the property because, of course, they don't want it to be torn down. The timelines and challenges of being even able to acquire a contractor to work on projects right now is very challenging. So I just want to know how we're going about that. I mean, I love seeing the work that's currently being done out by the department. But those are issues that are raised and certainly could adversely impact these landowners unintentionally. So I wanted to ask the sponsor of the bill if he could respond to those two questions.
Would the sponsor yield to the questions by the good senator?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleague, for the questions. So we're amending a current law, right? And why we're doing that is because the current law needed these timelines, as the Director of DPW has recommended. Initially, we put in some stringent timelines and I possibly with the Director, at that time, going through a lot of challenges, meeting what the administration wants. And they're really looking at this now and cleaning up our commercial buildings and residential buildings and getting rid of this. And they were seeing a lot of problems in enforcement and getting property owners to reply to those that they were able to find. Then when we initially set some stringent timelines based on the recommendations, they went back and they looked this over with their department. And then all these other topics came up about, is it in probate? Is the person deceased? Can we find these property owners and so forth? So they wanted to give themselves some more flexibility. And that's with this substitute version that we introduced on the floor. So these dates and timelines, you know, how they're going about it now, where they're frustrated with the current law. And they're asking us to consider what they're recommending, which they have approved in this substitute version. Now, if that doesn't work out for them somehow and they find more difficulties, maybe we had to revisit that. But at this time, this is what they're asking for. And I appreciate the question I asked for my colleague's support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just want a clarification. How are they addressing or is the sponsor aware of, how is DPW addressing those issues now? Because I'm sure they're going to come up. I mean, in most cases, you know, especially a family home being abandoned, there's a reason probably why that home is abandoned. But how are they addressing the timelines? Because even within 60 days, if you receive a notification that you either have to bring your home to a certain standard or, you know, DPW is going to come in and tear it down and put a lien against your property, your private property, how is DPW dealing with that? Because, my goodness, even to address probate or undivided interests, that could take years. So how is that being addressed now, particularly with regards to, like I said, you know, the individual landowner out there that may not be a big business, but is simply an individual landowner? How are they addressing this even within the 60-day timeline? How is DPW accommodating that? So we don't end up with unintended consequences, you know, where we don't have the legal representative. And then what? Is DPW just going to issue a citation? Who are they dealing with? And how do they address if the landowner needs additional time to either hire a contractor or even come up with the money? Most people don't have $15,000, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 to go in within 30 or 60 days to do a repair? Or do they need to just fence the property? I mean, what is being done now to address that? So we don't have a situation where, you know, a landowner who's maybe not even aware or informed, who's a legal landowner? Who's a legal representative that's contacted? So that we don't have a situation where you have an individual landowner that has their property or their home removed, and yet they're not properly notified or given reasonable time to address corrections, considering our current challenges in the communities, particularly with regards to hiring contractors, even if you have the money right now because of the circumstance with the workers being able to come into the island. It's difficult to be able to get a contractor to work on, especially on these type of projects. So can we get clarification from the sponsor? I just want to know, how is that being addressed now? So we don't end up in adverse consequences, because certainly, I think we recognize the value of private property ownership. And if the government's going to intervene to go in and demolish or whatever the case may be on your private property, we want to make sure proper notice is given and reasonable opportunities given for the landowner to address correction, considering the numerous circumstances that could be available with regards to the ownership of the property or the ability of the property owner to pay for restoring the property or the building or whatever the case may be. I think that's a reasonable request. So is the sponsor willing to clarify for that so we could have some awareness of how that's being addressed? Because these timelines, even 60 days, is very tight, even in the best of circumstances. So I just want to know that we don't end up with other unintended consequences as a result of this.
Would the sponsor yield?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, colleague, for the question. I'm going to refer to the October 5, 2021, letter from the Director of DPW, Mr. Vance Areola, where he wrote to Senator Talina Nelson, the Committee Chair for this bill. The first thing he wrote when we made the amendment to introduce on this substitute version on the floor, which they agree upon, is reference to the subsection that we're talking about, 66503. They had a few comments for this revision and because it requires that the building official to notify owners to post notices and within 10 days of the findings. Now, with their current experience, sometimes they're facing 60-day turnaround time for notices, sometimes, and posting. And issues because of this may include property owners having passed, probate may be pending, lack of appointed administrator, identifying the last legal order, addresses are incorrect or may have changed, and the government records may conflict. They're struggling with all that they have to go through. And they have advised us that this will be helpful for them so they can move forward. They're asking for leeway so they can balance these things out, at least have an opportunity to make it quicker, to make it faster. It's up to them. They're just asking for some leeway because they identified the problem. There's going to be more future problems to come up, but they're saying this could help. We can continue to try to make it a perfect thing, but that's, for now, this is what the Department of Public Works is asking us to simply do, to provide them timelines that gives them some leeway so they can enforce this law. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Brown, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the response by the good sponsor, but I guess I have to call the Director of Public Works. I think that's a critical point that needs to be clarified on how is DPW dealing with those, you know, unusual circumstances that don't fit into a perfect box. I did read the bill. I did see the timelines. And again, that's what raised the question for me, is how are we addressing those circumstances? They're not as uncommon, I mean, especially inherited land on Guam. It's not uncommon to have undivided interests that have not been addressed. And I just want to make sure that we do have and address proper notice. And then if there's good faith, and I think it's one of the things you look at, there's good faith effort by the landowner to address compliance. And, you know, I just want to know that they're being given a reasonable period of time to be able to do that, if they're able to get their property back to a condition of where it's not identified and defined as a derelict building. I'm very pleased to see. I understand the burdens that come with running the Department of Public Works. Haven't been there myself for a couple of years. I'm glad to see that DPW is able to go out and address these issues because some of these buildings obviously have been hazards and they've been longstanding. But at the same time, I want to ensure that when we do enter private property and we're going to impose the will of the government to essentially enter your property, demolish a structure if that's the case, put a lien on your property and take possession of your property, I just want to make sure all opportunities provided to the private landowner to either address compliance or be able to, you know, be able to ensure that their rights are also protected, because I think that's very important. I don't, you know, to agree, I can understand the involvement of the government in certain areas and other areas. I'm not so open to the government being involved, especially with the value and importance of private property. So I'll give the Director of DPW a call and find out how they're currently dealing with this very question. Because I'm sure in most cases, it's not a clean-cut issue, especially if it's a family home and you have children more than 1, 2, 3, 5, 10, and maybe the property hasn't gone through probate. And maybe that's why the, you know, the home is in the condition that it's in and it's not being addressed. I just think that's important. Otherwise, I have no issue with the bill. But I just want some comfort level that private property rights and the process is put in place and the opportunity, as I mentioned, for the private landowner to be given a reasonable period of time to address compliance, especially right now, when it's very difficult to get contractors, you know, hiring them, the cost of hiring them right now, and then their availability to be able to come in and do the kind of work that may need to be done to get a home back in compliance. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment and ask questions with regards to this bill.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Chulai, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. I have to agree wholeheartedly with Senator Brown. And let me just say, and let me just speak in our language. Do she answer this movie or parajona? The total issue is given a necessity to perform a journal, to perform a family. If I'm going to give my decision, my footy, my family, my family. And this is why, Madam Speaker, I have to agree with the Senator. We have to revise a still a bill. My guy did really, my went to see it, put part of your day to talk to. The despair is part of my wife, he's the young king, he's a guy, he's a drunk, he's a woman, he's a woman. Part of the solution, the opinion, the part of the fine. Part of my mother, if I'm going to give my, how fast in a closet, my guy did really. We come here almost every day with the mindset that what we need to do is promote the quality of life of our people. And here we are. We're talking about people that cannot afford to have their structures and taken down because they don't have the money. There's poverty all around our villages. And I say this because I experienced it. Do she answer my movie or the total issue is my necessity to do for my family, my family. The sin of my footy, my footy, I perform a family, my family. Post bastard, my went to support, part of your day to talk to. The despair, the lackness, the still a class in bill. And he gave me a little look, Madam Speaker. So I get you, really, to move to get you, really, move, submit, submit it all to. But I spent, but I do it to talk to. She's just massive, Madam Speaker.
She's just massive, Senator, Senator Taitikui, or Senator Duaneis, you're recognized.
She's just massive, Madam Speaker. As a co-sponsor, I certainly rise in full support of bill 151-36. You know, when I was invited by the good Senator Moellen to go and visit with other officials the derelict structure in Tumom, that many of us know for many, many years, the story behind that failed structure of a hotel and then, of course, the adjacent parking that had been used over the years, many, many years, by folks who have come on hard times, homeless people. But it eventually became a little bit more than that. In fact, not a little bit more than that. It became a trash heap. It became a place where crimes are being committed. Buildings behind it were burned out. It became a place where during the height of our tourism, there was extensive concern for the safety of our people who use Tumom as well as our guests who come to visit our beautiful island. I agree with my good Senator Brown in terms of the work that's being done by DPW. I know a lot of times, the prompting of the good work of our agencies is when attention is brought to issues. And I'm glad too to see that happen. Madam Speaker, the issue of derelict buildings. And I know we're talking about also the extension into structures in the village, maybe families. I've dealt with undivided interests. I've dealt with issues such as that, not only as the Director of Land Management, but as an administrator of several estates. So I know those complexities as well. Madam Speaker, we have a public duty. We have a public duty to the entire public. Because the safety of our community extends beyond just what resides on a piece of property. The safety of our community extends to every citizen in the community, the public health of the community. Madam Speaker, when we went into that structure, it is infested with rodents and piles and piles of beer cans, mattresses, abandoned cars. We have a duty and a responsibility to our public. Because they are entitled to proper public health and safety. The current structure that's being taken down right now, there are many homes and children who play in that area. I remember when there was a building in Tumoming, under the previous administration, that had finally been broken down, that had been burned out, and then other structures around it. People took responsibility and went and put fences up over the windows and at least made sure that the property was secure. Because the public, the services that the government provides, has a duty and a responsibility for public safety first and foremost. Madam Speaker, the way I read this section that's questioned under the 60 days, it is the duty and the responsibility of Public Works. It is after the findings. The notice is Public Works' responsibility. It is to go in and exhaust all the resources of finding out Department of Land Management resources, all of the history, whoever has command of that property. It is giving more responsibility and a timeline to the government. This is not to say that the private landowner or those who have undivided interests or those who are to be notified cannot remedy the situation. Remedy should be given. This is about the government's responsibility. If you read the section, the section is the impetus, the emphasis on the government. Certainly, by the passage of this bill, more awareness will be in our public about our duty and our responsibility. And yes, there are complicated issues a lot of times. Madam Speaker, I drive through villages just like you. And one of the ravages of drug infestation and everything that's happening on Guam is we have a lot of properties that have been lost. I sympathize with that situation. I really do. But the children and the neighbors and our public, they're entitled to a neighborhood in commercial areas and residential areas and all of our areas around our island to public safety and public health. This is not a land grab. This is not a property grab. It's the government doing its job to make sure that accommodations can be made. I drew attention one time when I went to Dedido because neighbors were asking me questions about different residences. So I took it upon myself, Madam Speaker, and I did the research. The three homes that were really, really in derelict condition and not secured, they were under probate. And as soon as that probate is finished, I'm sure those things are going to go on the market because of our lack of housing and our lack of residences and affordable housing and real estate individuals who, I'm sure, know every single time a property is ready to be sold so they could improve that property and try to make a profit. So those are conditions whereby estates and governments and individuals have come together and the time that's going to lapse there is already on record because it's with the courts. But in other instances, when the government acts properly and acts timely, then the estates can be notified and they can do their due diligence. I believe in our people. I believe in our families. I believe, yes, there are people who have been off of Guam for a long time now and don't know the condition and the situation under which assets that are very valuable over the years that have been passed down through generations may be in disrepair, may have been abandoned. Well, then, it's incumbent upon our government, our government to do its job, our government under this section, to notify and to not be an enabler to the system. Compassion can always come in. Not charging the family $100,000, $20,000, $10,000 to go in and break down a structure, compassion can come in. Government resources can be put aside to demolish those structures, give maybe 18 months, two years for the estate to resolve its issues. And when it either takes the property and divides it, whoever gets it pays the bill. If they sell it, the bill gets paid. There are ways. This is not rocket science. But the activity of the government to protect the entire public is something that is a responsibility of us as lawmakers. So those are my feelings, Madam Speaker. The government needs to be compassionate and accommodating whereby it can. But it has a duty and responsibility to every single citizen that lives and breathes on this island. She's just massive, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this bill.
She's just massive, Senator. On the bill, Senator Taitikui, you are recognized.
She's just massive, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I'm Speaker. I just wanted to make it clear to especially those who are listening that the letter we received from Public Works, the Director, I was reading through it too as well. And I didn't see anything that said "support", but I did see that he says he does support the intent of the bill. And we understand the importance of the island-wide derelict structure projects that, you know, it, so I just wanted to make that clear because the way I read the public hearing, it was clear that DPW, as well as other agencies, has already started a program with the Island Beautification Task Force. And this was started a while ago. I believe last year it started. And they've been taking this very cautiously, considering the pandemic, considering what's been, what we've been going through for the last two years and understanding that it's very difficult for anybody to even, you know, react to any kind of issues that they have, especially if it comes to their homes, let alone the biggest problem of all is finding contractors to work on any kind of buildings, let alone coming to do some plumbing in your house. It's been very, very difficult. Now is not the time to start implementing huge fines to our community, especially when DPW has already been addressing this. And even in today's newspaper, in the Post, you can see it. It says "I saw a gun". You talk about compassion, but you also have to include balance of safety as well. I understand that. But right now, I don't think is a time to put a bill like this that puts so much penalties, I mean, high penalties on situations that we're, especially considering the climate we're in today. So Madam Speaker, you know, I know that DPW did mention they're doing everything they can to do this cautiously to approach owners of buildings. And many times, they said it's been very difficult to find these individuals. One situation was when the building actually is owned by many family members and everybody is trying to fight on who's going to be the one to pay any of the taxes, who's the one that's going to be able to put up, front the money to take care of any... front the money to take care of any repairs or damages. And then it went into probate. And we all know probate takes about a year. Without this legislation, I think what DPW has been doing in the past is work with these families, work with businesses to see what they can do. But if we start putting fines of $5,000 because they didn't answer within, I think it's how many days? "The building owner shall be issued a citation with a penalty of up to $5,000 if they or their representative fail to appear on a specific date." Well, where's the leeway for DPW to work with these families? We're just trying, threatening? It's not going to get us anywhere. It's working with our community. That's what we need to do. And again, DPW has been working with the Island Beautification Task Force on this particular project. So I can see if we're here today and we had a major issue, nothing is being done. Then I can see us being here today, looking at this legislation and considering it. But they are doing work. They have not only DPW involved, but other agencies, as well as the Island Beautification Task Force have been put in place to address these issues and to work with families and business owners. Safety, that's very important. And like I said, it's a balance. Compassion and safety and put that balance into place. But when we start putting legislation to automatically, you know, charge them $10,000 and on up or $5,000 on up, I mean, because there's two different prices in here or penalties and fines. I don't think there's compassion there. But I think what they're doing right now, DPW is doing, and we can see it in the paper today, we can see it on January 12th. If you look at the paper back then, January 12th, and if you look at what happened last year as well and how they're moving forward, they are doing something about this. And they are meeting with families. As far as the issues of a parking lot that was abandoned, I know the owner of that parking lot. They put up fences, they put up security, and every single time someone would come and cut the fence and go in there and live. When he finds out about it, he calls GPD to come down saying, "We have trespassers." And I've been told after the third time of calling, when a situation like this would happen, that GPD just doesn't show up until like a day later. And then again, they have to go in and put up the fence again that's been cut, asking those people, "You're trespassing, you need to leave." And I tell you, he said it gets pretty scary sometimes. If anybody has the guts to go in and trespass, you know, cut a fence and go in there and trespass, I don't think you want to go up against someone like that. But it takes forever for GPD to show up. So circumstances like this has to be addressed too. And DPW puts that in consideration with issues on derelict buildings and structures. So, Madam Speaker, I just think now is not the time to put a legislation like this together. Compassion and safety, and that's exactly what DPW has been doing. And again, look at today's paper. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bills, is there any other senator that'd like to be recognized?
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Point of information, Senator Moilen.
Madam Speaker, there was referred to in the bill of the $5,000 remark amount. In the substitute version, I just remind to point out to my colleagues, it says up to $5,000. Up to $5,000 may be $1 or it may be $5,000. So it's up to $5,000. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moilen. Senator Adaya, recognized, then Senator Torres.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as a co-sponsor of Bill 15136, I stand in support of this legislation. And I understand the concerns of my colleagues. But I also look at what we have to do in balancing safety and compassion as well. And when you look at throughout the island, all the abandoned structures that we have, the abandoned homes that we have, those are safety concerns. One, they may collapse, or two, they become a drug house or even places where sexually committed crimes are done. Madam Speaker, I know DPW, there's a process. And I don't think that they've ever, they've ever gone out and said, "Well, okay, this is the law that we need to turn around and abide by every word in it." I know that they give leeways. And I'm sure that if they understand that one, perhaps a home is under probate, that there are separate heirs or things like that, and then it's brought up to DPW, that they would understand. But I think what the issue is notification. And I think communication between the property owner and the Department of Public Works is key. It's a two-way street, both with the department and the homeowners. And that's where it's key. Because I think as long as the department knows that action is being taken on a property, and for example, like the one in Tumon, the parking structure, DPW will continue to advise. But the property owner also has that obligation to the community to keep that property safe while, one, it's going to be demolished or two, refurbished. So I think it's a little bit of give and take here. But overall, this is a legislation that's needed because we do need to update our laws. We do need to update the penalties. And these are the penalties that were recommended by DPW. So, Madam Speaker, I hope my colleague takes these, all these into consideration and please to support this legislation so that we can update our laws and also keep our islands safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Adaya. Senator Torres, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think that the four co-sponsors had very good intentions with going forward with something that could be deemed to be controversial. But it really doesn't need to be controversial. I don't think that this bill is putting everybody on notice that if you've got a derelict home or an abandoned home or something that this is going to be your fate. What I think this does is it opens up the opportunity for us to take care of buildings that are clearly dangerous to the community for all the reasons cited in the bill. I mean, one of the greatest challenges we've had as a tourism destination is to build Guam to where it is desirable and safe. Desirable for people to come and enjoy, safe for people to come and enjoy, but also desirable for investors who would come to Guam or investors within Guam that would take it upon themselves to build infrastructure that would accommodate and help grow a tourism market, which we knew was, before pandemic, was the third leg of our economy. Many of these buildings that are within the mind frame of DPW to focus on as clear dangers, dangerous situations that need to be remedied, we have to allow them to, we have to allow them the opportunity and fix those loopholes in the law that are barriers to DPW. The other thing that I want to bring up is, you know, we have to be sensitive, of course, to people losing their property, the collateral damage, the unintended consequences. But I don't believe that this bill is necessarily addressing that. I think that this bill will help us as a community to not only remedy dangerous buildings, but also help to start establishing a standard, a standard for what a decent community ought to be like. A standard where people who have derelict buildings that are in danger of falling apart, that now harbor illicit activity or dumping environmental hazards, that those start to be taken care of. Because without establishing that benchmark of what is acceptable, what is not, what will be allowed, what will be addressed by the government, without this start, we'll never have that standard that we can begin to hold people to where if you're going to have a property that's in a very public place, that is affecting your neighbors, that is not only a blight on the community, but a danger to the community and a deterrent from others to make that community, you know, a whole and safe and attractive and enjoyable piece of property. Everybody's entitled to their enjoyment of property. I think in this regard, this bill addresses what has been a big problem on Guam, where people are allowed to have properties fall into such a state that it causes a problem for everybody. And I applaud the four. I know that, you know, there's a lot of worry about how it affects the little guy. But I think if you were to consider what is really being discussed here, it's some of those in-your-face, very prominent problematic properties that must be dealt with because they are, they do affect adversely the rest of the community. And so I think we need to, we need to just be bold and start setting the standard and start having people understand that there's, that we have to be responsible. Nobody wants to take anybody's home away. And I don't think that we've ever aspired to do that as a government or as a policymaker. But I think that where people need to be held accountable for their properties or the government then takes ownership and has them remediate that cost to the government, that that is a very justifiable avenue to take. So I do stand in support. And I think that this might be the beginning of a fresh start for Guam as we look at what we are as an island going forward, an attractive island that can build upon a good economy and maybe build upon recovering what was once a very flourishing tourism industry as well. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill 151, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized? Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this bill 151-36COR, when it first came to play, I I was having mixed emotions whether I wanted to support it or not. But after years of seeing facilities not being taken care of and knowing that the government does continue to try to get a hold of these folks, to see what they can do to fix their places up, you know, it's like being caught between a rock and a hard place. And I was reminded by the good mayor, now Senator Pedro Terlaga, when he spoke about the the struggles that families go through. I mean, all of us in this room can look at all the villages out there. And, you know, even during conversations and drives with family and friends, people talk like, "That building is such an eyesore, that house is an eyesore, that store should be taken down." But the retiring speaker from Jonah spoke about the livelihoods of how people are struggling just to live day by day. And in this sense, I said to myself, "Do we continue to let things just sit?" When this has been talked about for many, many years about how our island really is supposed to look and how we try to keep it beautiful so that when we have visitors, they can see truly what the island beauty is all about and how we live and how our facilities and our buildings look? And do we also look at the fact that some of families who literally had houses given to them and then for some reason or another cannot find the means to upkeep it? And as I respect and support the efforts and the intent of this bill, I was hoping that maybe the good author can work with me and see, I'm talking to legal counsel, talking to legal counsel earlier, is to see if there's a way that we can have a win-win for this. I must commend this administration and share some of the sentiments that was said earlier about how the Beautification Task Force and the administration and the work through, the lieutenant governor has been doing so well in trying to clean up all these eyesores because it needs to be done. But I also want to speak on the expertise of one of our own colleagues who literally talked about how our people lived and how some of them, for some reason or another, have fallen into not even affording to fix what is rightfully theirs. But you don't want them to lose their property. So how can we find that help? I know there's an appeal process, I know there's a timeline, and those are all good. But what if, for good cause, we can put something in there that gives that board or that commission an opportunity to look, if there is justification enough to say, "Okay, we can either give them an extended timeline, maybe not hit the penalties so hard, but give that opportunity just in case." Because I do know that there are some owners out there who are just derelict or who just don't give a hoot and don't care because they're not there anymore. But I'm talking about the ones that the good senator from Jonah was talking about. And I think it's important. So can we just have a moment's recess so I can just confirm with Legal to see if there's anything I can work with the author on on this? If I may, Madam Speaker?
Yes, a two-minute recess. Yes, a two-minute recess.
I'm Nina Tantaisai, and the House Attorney on Guam is back from recess. We were... Vice Speaker Tina Munya-Barnes, you have the floor.
Sido masi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity and the time to work with Legal, to have the opportunity to proffer this amendment. I will go ahead, in the interest of time, just read it. So, line 20 to 22 on page five, to amend section 66503(c), to read, where it says, "After the period of government of Guam, delete, the property owners shall be issued a citation of no less than $1,000 or more than $10,000," all the way down to section 66503(b)(4) of this chapter. And then, it continues on line 23, page five, "to renumber the current section 66503(c)(1) in the bill as section 66503(c)(3), and to add a new subsection (1) and (2) to section 66503(c), to read: "One, the building officials shall provide notice in writing by personal service certified mail or registered mail, the owner, occupant, leasing, mortgagier, agent, or other persons having an interest in said building of a hearing to be held within 30 days of its determination of noncompliance with the section 66503(b)(4), ordered to show cause why the owner, occupant, leasing, mortgagier, agent, and/or persons having an interest in said building felt to comply with such order. Notwithstanding any other provisions of law, rule, or regulation to the contract, the building official is hereby authorized and may hold the hearing under this section virtually." Two, absent a showing of good cause, the hearing officer may issue a citation of no less than $1,000 or nor more than $10,000 for the noncompliance pursuant to this chapter. So I hope that helps. I'm open to any other suggestions from my colleagues to try and find, if they have a better resolve than this. But it also addresses some of the concerns that were brought up by a previous speaker, one of my colleagues. So, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this amendment, and I just hope for a favorable response. Sino masi.
Sino masi. Senator Sinagastin, on the amendment, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the amendment, provided maybe, if it could be considered, the days there when it says 30 days, if that can be increased to either 60 or 90, is to ensure that when we send something out in the mail, or when they're looking for somebody, if they're not on Guam, it normally takes two, three weeks to just get mail there and get it back. We'll be beyond the 30. And if we don't allow that latitude or flexibility, we may corner ourselves where it says within, oops, or 31. What do we do? I'm just saying, we allow that flexibility, maybe increase it to 60 or even 90 days. I think it'd be appropriate because just ensure the mail gets out, or the agents that they employ here finds them. Because remember, we're talking about, if you look at the different, have an interest in the building, occupant, leasing, maybe an occupant that's been there forever, but don't even know where he's located. All he does is he sends the check, he pauses it. That's what I'm just saying, just to allow it even as much as 90 days, just the flexibility to allow it, and if the author of the amendment can consider that.
Senator Sinagastin, are you making an amendment to that amendment?
Okay, I'll just got to get it written, then it'll be 90.
90 days?
30 to 90.
All right, while it's being written, it's going to be 90 instead of 30 days under subsection 1 of the amendment. Would anyone like to speak on the amendment to the amendment? Senator Moylan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the author of the bill, and also the proposed amendment to the amendment. I agree with this, I think it's supportive, and as we heard during our discussion, this will be very helpful for that ability, the flexibility for DPW, and for all those concerned on each party's side, whether civilian or the business owner and DPW. So I have no objections to the amendment to the amendment of what was authored by, for this proposed amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Moylan. On the amendment to the amendment, the Sinagastin amendment to change 30 to 90 days, is there anyone else who would like to be recognized? It's being copied, I'm just going to wait a few seconds then for it to be put on your desk before we vote on it. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on the amendment to the amendment? So thank you to the clerks, they've put this in writing. And so now, the amendment to the amendment is on your desks. Is there any objection to the amendment to the amendment? In other words, we're going to change 30 days to 90 days in subsection 1. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Amendment passes. Oops, sorry. We're now back on the Munya Barnes amendment. Is there anyone else who would like to be recognized on that? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm supportive of this amendment, and this is one of the questions that I had raised earlier with regards to the bill. I think we all agree that we want to address the derelict buildings around the island, and certainly, not just because of the physical, visual blight that they impose, but obviously, the safety concerns that we have in our community, and wanting to ensure that we present the best presentation that we can. So I have no issue with that. But I also want to ensure that as we go through this process, and I, of all people who've been in my own career involved with regards to enforcement, I have no problem enforcing the law. Absolutely no problem. And I've gone up against some big opponents, but you know, if you've got the law on your side, you've got the law on your side. But I also just want to make sure that the opportunity is there, particularly because circumstances may involve the landowner not being on Guam. The landowner could be elderly and not able to have the ability on their own to immediately address compliance. But the main thing is wanting to ensure that if the landowners, or once they determine who, again, we have a lot of issues with undivided interest of property here on Guam, particularly inherited property, that as long as they're making a good faith effort to comply within a reasonable period of time, perhaps they want to restore their building, whatever the case may be, that option is provided, so that we're not literally coming down with the hammer in a very hard way, because we're trying to follow the timelines on circumstances that don't fit into a perfect box. And I think if we allow the latitude, allow the director of the department to work with the landowner, and that they see that there's good faith effort, then they're not going to impose any fine, and they'll work with them, either, like I said, to allow them to restore the building, if that's the desired outcome, or demolish the building, if that's the case. But we just need to also respect private property rights, and granted, you know, we create laws as lawmakers to ensure a certain quality of society that we want to see. And God forbid, if we didn't have laws, what would people do? But at the same time, we just want to be fair, because the owners of this property, they may not be a big corporation that you can identify, that may have the pockets to address it. It may be an elderly person that is not able to hire a contractor, or may not have the financial wherewithal. Maybe they can work out a happy medium on how the issues can be resolved, so the property can be put in a condition that would be acceptable under our laws. But we need that latitude. And so, this allows for that, and allows for the consideration of the department director to do that and work with the landowner, and I have no problem with that. And that's the main reason that I had raised that question earlier with regards to what I see as very tight timelines, even at 60, 90 days, for any individual to be able to address these issues. So I certainly rise in support of the amendment. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tyteguy, on the amendment, you are recognized.
Sido masi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunities to stand in support of this amendment. And this is the balance that we were talking about, the ability to bring the compassion, as well as the safety of our community, into play. Madam Speaker, this is not just, you know, the derelict buildings that are causing issues in our community, or, you know, the eyesore that's there above us, but we also have to be considerate of all those other buildings that are considered, like Nenlahan, certain of those abandoned buildings are waiting for funding from the Guam Preservation Trust to be part of a historical area. And these buildings are abandoned. You know, this gives the director the ability to say, "No, not this building, because we're waiting for, this is a historical building," and they're waiting for the funding to build on it. So this allows the director that opportunity to say, "You know, stop, there's no fines needed on this." And hopefully, the Guam Preservation Trust with Senator Brown's bill get through. Hopefully, that'll provide the funding they need to address those particular buildings culturally. And, Madam Speaker, I just have one question to ensure the intent of this amendment that the vice speaker put forward, which, again, I stand in full support of, is to ensure that this is throughout the bill, because you see that there are several areas that have, you know, fines and fees. And I just want to make sure that throughout the bill, that it does address anything when it comes to fines and fee, that it's showing good cause, as it says, absent a showing of good cause, and gives the director the ability to make those calls. And because the bill is quite lengthy. So it's just a question to the author, if does this amendment apply to everything in the bill?
The author, you're up.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. To the senator from Timuning, I want to say that this probably would be the proper time to put a motion on the floor and give Legal, I guess, the opportunity to make the necessary connections if she wants to, I mean, to add on to, if there's any other section that may be viable to do that. I don't know if that needs a written amendment to make any legal, technical change to that. So that's maybe something that we can look at, just to make sure, based on all the citations that are in, that if it needs to be proffered, then give the Legal the opportunity to make the necessary correction, I mean, technical changes as necessary, or additions as necessary, based on that provision. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Senator Tyteguy.
I appreciate that, and I guess, because there was an amendment to the amendment already, I don't know if I can do that. I guess we can seek through Legal, but it's not an amendment to the amendment, but I guess through the whole, let us take one minute recess, just to ensure we're doing it correct. And that the intent of the vice speaker's amendment, it's throughout the whole entire bill.
Yes, Senator, could you just, for the benefit of Legal, restate your concern that you want them to address?
My concern is, with regards to the amendment itself, and allowing that the director, absent a showing of good cause, you know, giving the authority really ultimate to the director or the department agency, that they can waiver any fees and timelines that are implemented into this legislation. And it's throughout the bill, because the bill is quite lengthy, and there are several areas that have fees and fines incorporated. So I just wanted to find out if that section 2 applies to the entire bill.
All right. That... Yeah, I... All right, we're going to take a one-minute recess, one-minute recess.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Senator Moynihan, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you for that time to discuss further about the intention that I was hoping the vice speaker had with this amendment throughout the bill. And I think we've come to a consensus, you know, and I truly appreciate the time. And I stand in support of this amendment, thank you. As amended, thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Taitikui. On the Munia Barnes amendment, Senator Duanyas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Sisus Massey. I rise in support of the amendment as amended. And once again, just to go over, Madam Speaker, the teeth that's being put into this bill. Just to kind of go back to the section that I was referring to earlier, the building official, whenever he shall make a finding as a result of the examinations required, shall, within 60 days of completing the finding, notify in writing, and then everything else goes down. This is the building official's responsibility, Madam Speaker. This is not necessarily the attachment to the property owner, whether it be commercial or residential. The teeth here is for Public Works. Madam Speaker, I've heard other things, and that's why I appreciate this amendment. I've heard other notifications of a construction project, or a building owned by the government of Guam. Obviously, the government of Guam would know what is the condition of the buildings that are in its inventory. Madam Speaker, a construction project, this body was the one who extended, with your support, extended projects and the timelines because of the issues with construction, and with workers, and the like. I'm pretty sure Public Works will know if they approach a job site that's derelict, or not continuing going forward by their permitting process, that that construction project is held up for one reason or another, because of the requirements of law. So I just wanted to make sure that the listening public and those out there understand that we are not, we are not becoming the run-around-the-island-and-find-building police. We're strengthening the current law, which Public Works does support, to give them the teeth and the ability to go out and do what they're doing. But most of this relies on the building officer, just like the hearing that's being proposed here to the building officer within 90 days. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. And in closing on this amendment, once again, Madam Speaker, it is those structures deemed, meaning deemed, you're not out there just running around trying to find something. It's deemed to have been, as per the laws of Guam. So certainly, I rise in support of this amendment. I think it really puts that, you know, puts that added ability for the disposition. But nothing in this bill, as originally drafted, was trying to take that away. It was trying to strengthen the laws and the teeth that DPW has to be able to do its job, but not to become a master adjudication, and running out there and setting unreasonable timelines. Those are all protected. So I rise in support of this amendment. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, Senator. On the Munia Barnes amendment, on the amendment, if there's no one else to speak on the amendment, Senator Munia Barnes, you are
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to proffer this amendment, and I thank my colleagues who spoke in support of the amendment, and also for us to continue to try and strengthen this bill, but also give parity where it's needed, so thank you, and I hope there's no objection to this measure. Oh, and, so, Madam, Madam Speaker, if there's no objection to this one, I'd like to proffer another amendment, just based on the discussions and the previous speaker from... So...
My apologies, yes, we will rule on that amendment. So on the Tina Munia Barnes amendment that is on the floor, as amended, is there any objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection, motion, amendment passes. And, Senator...
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you so very much, Madam Speaker. I do have one more amendment in the spirit of making sure that we do what we're asking for, based on the amendment as amended, that the amended amendment has passed. And I've asked legal to look it over, to make sure that we're working on it, so I ask that maybe we break till 2:00?
All right. If everyone else could also get their amendments into the clerks during this break. Yeah, we will break recess until 2:00 PM.